Order the Board of Education meeting at seven six. You would all things rise.
It is wonderful to see a crowd. Dr. Willett, acknowledgements.
All right, so as you can tell, we have a really exciting evening with quite a few acknowledgements. BGP artwork, perhaps I'll save that piece to the end and we'll jump to music recognition first and then I'll kind of circle back. So we've got some great music recognitions tonight. We're going to, we had basically, I think, all the music teachers, music choral teachers in the back. We have a lot of the honorees here tonight. And we'll be talking about the get the award of best communities for music education that Tallinn got, which I had mentioned in the past at one point. The Halo Award recipients, which is a great honor for our young adults, the Spirit Decor Awards. And we have Senator Gordon here with us tonight, who will also be providing information and some proclamations for the kiddos. In addition to that, the Halo Awards, you know, came, information was coming in and the session wasn't fully complete. So we don't have all of the proclamations for the Halo Award, young adults, but that's, that will be forthcoming. So, oh, and Representative tonight, been here as well, so am I missing? Representative Ackert. And I did want to point out that among so many of the award nominees tonight and so on, we'll hear a lot of their names. But Tyler Heinz, I believe, also won the top jazz soloist, which is pretty amazing. And his surname, right? It's not going to go there. So we'll be going through a lot of these honorees and everything, but I just wanted to kind of throw out that introduction and start. Do, I know maybe in the back, our music teachers, choral teachers are here, could you guys stand up and introduce yourselves? Maybe left or right, starting with Emily.
Hi, everyone, I'm Emily Delortino, I'm the chorus and general music teacher at Tallinn.
Norma Marcasani, fourth and fifth grade band and chorus at TIS.
Noah Fields, high school choral director.
Matthew May, high school instrumental director.
And I'm Peter Delmonico, middle school band director and teacher.
Just they do an amazing job. Maybe we'll start with the Halo Award nominations. Music choral teachers like to, to mention the Halo, Halo Award nominees or award winners. Actually, that is a nominee, so I was thinking of Tony Awards doing, I mean, this is the.
I can name a lot. So this year participated in the Halo Awards, which is an organization that goes around to a bunch of schools. They went to 185 different high school musical and play productions this year. And so we had them come to Haiti Town, they came on Friday night to adjudicate, they looked at various areas from acting on stage to even our students behind the stage, our set design, our lighting design, props, stage management. So it's a nice, all inclusive review of our production. So Tallinn was recognized with eight nominations, which was amazing. We were recognized with the best performance in a featured male role with Aaron. We were nominated with best lighting design and execution with our lighting team with Beckett, Repel, Down, Aiden, Piper. Best scenic design and or execution with Naomi, Danica, Harper, and Nia. Best props design, Caitlin, Naomi, and Anna. Best stage management with Harper as a stage manager and her assistant stage manager, Tor. Best specialty ensemble with our fates being Katie, Brooke, and Annie. We got a nomination for best, best performance in a supporting female role in a musical with Angelique Esposito. And then we had a nomination which actually took home an award as best performance in a leading female role in a contemporary musical with Eve, winning the Halo for that award. So we're very thankful.
And as I had mentioned, the best communities in music education, not all communities in Connecticut get that. In fact, the majority do not, and ours has, and it's happened many years in a row. So again, that goes to the, the awesomeness and the abilities of our students and the, the great teaching that they get from the teachers. We also had a list of band and chorus kids that had performed in the PA music trip. And they were distinguished in that trip as well. I can read the names of the individuals that were part of that trip and performed for us. All students should be recognized here as the Tallinn Music Program came home with, I mentioned before, the, I, I hope I'm saying this okay, but the Spirit Decor, right? Yeah, you know, for demonstrating positive attitudes and behaviors and, and just being, being exemplars of, of what it is to be a performer. So Cart, as I said, Tyler has one there for jazz soloists and other students that won, or Colton, Arshenbow, Indigo Bender, Katie Bohan, Kimberly Booker, Terrica Brettis, Catherine Bumps, Bren Burnett, Ryan Case, Danica Castingway, Castingway, Olivia Clauser, Eve Demann, Michaela, Cacchio, Duccio, sorry, Tobius, Tobias Doolip, Donald Eaton, Emerson Foster, Aaron Liker, Juliet Habern, Emerson Hampton, Nikki Hang, Penelope Harold, Truman Harold, Tyler Heinz, Lily Hotm, Pele Ingram, Dustin Johnson, Morgan Jolly, and Sonya Keschals. Oh, wait, there's more, and a tiny little print here, so Thomas Kennedy, Tatiana Lines, Nicholas Lee, Kayla Marquez, Laura Mishel, Kevin Nedurno, Camelia Care, Ella Pasiga, Allison Filipina, Angelique Rodriguez, Julia Rusi, Elizabeth Rusi, William Selenek, Annie Singer, Jenny Swanson, Asher Ballow, Ella Wright, and Tatiana, I think that's Tatiana Zane. So congratulations to all the students that. One other thing I'd love to do right now, if, if you're able, is all the students that are here, please come up and get, we, we have these special awards for you. You know, now as the tariffs are in effect, these will be much more expensive. If you come up right now, I just want to give each of you one. Or there's a, there's three bins and they have different variants of this, so take the one that you want. I just wanted you guys to have something. It has many different logos.
Like how we have Lysin, we have the fifty-sixth of Huds.
What's that store?
Flash sale.
Flash sale.
The Father's Day gift, the Father's Day gift. On a budget.
Wish I had have the talent, you guys just don't have that nowadays. I remember when I was, we used to have, oh, come and.
Father's Day, Mother.
Like Father's Day, Mother Gala, like tables to come and buy stuff. Like, sons for this, bucks for this, like, you know.
I'm showing this to the staff.
Who knows all this, I didn't have people free.
And then Senator Gordon and Representative Beck, if you want to.
Yeah, sure, we also have citations. There's something, I think it'll be somewhere here. So Tyler, you want to have full, first of all, congratulations to everybody. We, there's a long list of names of everybody who has incredible accomplishments. We will get you individual citations, but the Senate and the House literally finished up a session last week, and it was a mad dash. So you can imagine that various things slowed down while we were busy working, including the office that makes citations. So we do have the list and we will get them to you. And then everybody can get their own individual one. So hopefully we will get that in the next week or two, once that Capitol office gets everything back on track with all the citations. But happy to be here, I can tell you I have no music talent, but I appreciate music talent. Except for too late, that's true. My wife might differ. I can tell you that, my son too. But phenomenal achievements by everybody, and the teachers and, and the programs as well, this is absolutely incredible. So happy to be here. We don't have, we don't have these in any particular order, but I'll, I'll strike this one.
And maybe for each one that whoever, so like this one for the jazz band, whatever, maybe there are teachers.
Yeah.
Whoever, whoever is a teacher or whoever, so you want to do it. But for me, just, I just want to make comment before we read these, as essentially saying, obviously, the arts are alive and well in Tallinn. And I was listening to the name, is anybody not in a program or an acting program? Because it sounds like the whole school is involved, so that's fantastic. When you get to hear about the amount of people involved with using any of, any of the arts, it's impressive. Whether it's the acting, as I just heard about the, the amazing people that are involved with that, or all your music programs, it's just fantastic. And who's, the Board of Ed is doing something right and making sure that they have the staff to provide those wonderful opportunities for our students. And not all students are thriving in, in a, in their education side. That part that you do that maybe keeps them engaged in education goes a long way to making sure that they have a successful, a successful career as a student. So congratulations to all of your efforts and, and your abilities. So go ahead, go ahead, you know the one.
So again, this is not in any particular order, but these are all official citations, I remind people, because it gets the, it's the nice gold seal from the state. But this is from the State of Connecticut, General Assembly, the House and the Senate, myself, Senator Jeff Gordon, Representative Tim Ackert, Representative Tammy Uchio, who could not be here today, but certainly sends her congratulations for everybody for what they've done. And this is, being hereby known to all, that the Connecticut General Assembly and the State of Connecticut hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to the Tallinn Music Program in recognition of your receipt of the prestigious Spirit Decor Award. You are celebrated for consistently demonstrating a positive attitude, respectful behavior, and a strong sense of unity, serving as the shiny example of teamwork and character in the music community, but also in the entire Tallinn community. The entire membership of the House and the Senate sends its, extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion, June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, signed by the Senate President Pro Tem, Speaker of the House, and the Secretary of State, and congratulations.
Once, somebody want to come up and. Would be.
We're happy to.
Yeah. Very similar, State of Connecticut General Assembly official citation, again, addressed by Senator Gordon, myself, and Representative Tammy Uchio. Being hereby known to all, that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers sincere congratulations to Tallinn Chorus. In recognition of your first place award with excellent ratings, you are recognized for your impressive collaboration, expressive sound, and the hard work that led to inspiring and beautiful executed performance. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and given the same day today, June eleventh. So if somebody would like to come up, I figured that there was going to be a repeat, a repeat on this one, so.
You'll need a big wall to hang all these things up.
Perfect, thank, thank you.
And the next one we have, again, from us and from the General Assembly in the state of Connecticut, is for the Chamber Choir. And so be it hereby known to all, in recognition of your first place award with excellent ratings, you are honored for your outstanding performance, vocal strength, and the dedication that shaped a cohesive and captivating musical experience for all. We extend our congratulations and very best wishes on that achievement, again, on this day, June eleventh, and happy to present this citation.
Angelique, somebody. There's a couple students that are, yeah, there's a couple students in that group. Yeah, the students.
Well, that's in the middle, here, I'll have you guys hold. You are, yeah, with everybody. And that's it.
And again, General Assembly, this citation, it is by three. But you kept shorter and shorter. You're hereby known to all, the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers sincere congratulations to the Jazz Band. In recognition of your first place award with superior ratings, you are applauded for your extraordinary talent, dynamic energy, and technical excellence, delivering a performance that reflected true artistry and passion for jazz. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion. With so many. You guys are well done, congratulations, gentlemen, well done.
Very well done.
Your top souls attend.
That's your award. And last but not least, one more official state citation from Representative Ackert, Representative Uchio, and myself, this is for the Chamber Choir. Being hereby known to all, the Connecticut General Assembly and the State of Connecticut hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to the Chamber Choir, in recognition of your first place award with excellent ratings, you are commended for your exceptional musicality, discipline, and the heartfelt expression you brought to every performance, raising the bar for choral excellence, and presented on this day, June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Congratulations. You were the ones who ordered it, yeah, great job. Angela, that's good job, congratulations. Congratulations.
Well, one quick comment, the units who won the Halo Awards, and it's probably pretty much the same group of people. But they, they will, as I mentioned before, they will give citations, there'll also be citations for the Halo.
So we have a very long list, my office is working on, I can tell you, as my office staff. Getting citations for everyone, once that office gets them all to us, we will get them to you and we can get out.
So were there, were there any students here tonight who didn't get to come up and get a photo? I just want to make sure we got everyone, I mean, you guys are still talented, you cross over in every direction, but I want to make sure we didn't miss any. Specifically. Situation you wanted, that you would be. Then you, I just wanted to. Basically, it's, it's, there's a series of them, so they.
Yes, thank you, thank you for letting us join.
To Dr. Willett, before. Yes, yes. The trophy.
All right.
Um, thank you, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, great, so much, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyones back for conversation? Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. And it's, it's awesome trophies here tonight, they were also from PA in the Hershey Park Competition. Do we want to say anything about the trophies?
There's a few awards I want to highlight, a couple other things we had throughout the year, but I just want to say thank you to all the Board of Education members, Dr. Willett, and Senator Gordon, and Representative Ackert, for the special recognition tonight for our students and staff, you know, it really means a lot to all of us here. We've had a very successful year across the district, as shown tonight, from Kate, Heather, and Norma inspiring and fostering our young musicians to the middle school earning all gold ratings tonight, at their adjudication with their plaques being here tonight. We, sorry, and with the high school earning first places across the band and choirs, with our trophies being here tonight with the Spirit Decor Award, which is an award that we are very proud of, because of course, we're all about musical excellence at Tallinn, but we're more about using music as a vessel to inspire and foster good human beings. So the Spirit Decor Award is one, is an award that's given to only one school at that weekend, and it shows them for a school based really upon their core characters, how they interact with themselves, with other schools. So we're very proud of them for that award this year. I'd like to highlight just a few other accomplishments we had for our department this year. Our high school pep band expanded this year, they were recruiting several, several new members and adding a winter season. It was great to see them at so many home football games and basketball games this year. They're even featured on NBC Connecticut News, you might have seen during the fall, when they were on the game of the week and featured interview when they collaborated with Northwest Catholic Pep Band to bring students together from across school districts to play together. We had several students across the middle school and high school make it into the Eastern Region Festival Ensembles, as well as four students from the high school making it into this year's All-State Festival. Additionally, thanks to the support we received from our administration, Mr. Bates and I volunteered and gave back to students from across the state, as well as ten other states this year, as part of the Eastern Division through CMEA, our state's music education association. This was my fifth and last year serving as the Eastern Region Mixed Choir Chair, as I will be taking over the Student Affairs Chair next year, which will be the person that oversees all the auditions and festivals for the middle school, high school, and the all-state. So wish me a little bit of sanity to that one. Mr. Bates and I also served CMEA to help run this year's Eastern Division Conference, because we were afforded the opportunity from our administration to attend that this year, which brought together around 2,000 music educators and harpers from 11 different states, along with approximately 2,000 students for five days. It was an incredible experience, and we were grateful that our district afforded us the opportunity to learn and serve. We also get to meet our former Secretary of Education, Dr. Miguel Cardona, who is from Connecticut, and it was a really cool experience to get to chat with him for a while. Next year, Mr. Bates will be serving as the new co-chair for the Eastern Region Jazz Ensemble, so he will be continuing to serve as well. We started a new tradition this year with our townwide concert series, where we had students from grade five through 12 perform together. We had one night for just band students and another night, another night for chorus, and it was a packed house for both nights. It was an incredible evening of music making, we had 200 students on stage for just the band night, playing together as well as 200 students on the chorus night, singing together. Now, we aren't certain, but Dr. Willett may have been set off that night when he was asked to introduce the last piece for the band concert, when it was the piece called This Old Dude, not to call anyone out here. But maybe it just took coincidence. And for the sixth year in a row, we're recognized as one of only 35 school districts in Connecticut to be nationally recognized as the best communities for music education, something that we are very proud of. All of our accomplishments that I've stated so far are just our ensembles, this doesn't even include any of the work that our amazing students do in just our general music classes or clubs. None of this would be possible without the incredible team of music educators we have. We're very privileged to have such amazing people that are so willing to collaborate together and provide our students with these amazing musical opportunities. I just want to give a quick shout out to three of our new music teachers, Peter Delmonico, Emmy Delortino, and Matt Abate, who in a few days will be completing their first year here at Tallinn, so we're very excited for them. We have three of them who've helped raise our department to a new level this year and made such a positive impact on our community. I cannot wait to see where they take us moving forward, as well as we had an intern this year from UConn, Caitlin Newman, who worked with our high school musicians all year, and we're very privileged to have her, she graduated last month and is now fully certified to teach. We wish her the best of luck as she looks for her position. Outside of the classroom, we also had an incredible year onstage with a middle school, bringing Newsies this year, and being the most successful show that they've ever done at the middle school. They sold the most tickets ever, had an amazing set, the students were awesome, and Emmy did an amazing job setting a new standard for what is possible for TMS Drama. At the high school, we had an incredible group of students and advisors, along with adult volunteers, who raised the bar as well for what's possible for the high school drama with Haiti Town this year, receiving the eight nominations that we said before, as well as Eve earning and receiving a Halo, which is something we're incredibly proud of for all of our students. Tonight is a very gritty, sweet night for us, as we're extremely proud and honored to be recognized tonight, while also facing the reality that due to clubs being cut, that there may not be a Jazz Band with Chamber Choir at the middle school next year, which feeds students into Jazz Band and Chamber Choir classes at the high school and creates uncertainty to the impact that this will have to those classes, as well as Newsies in Haiti Town may be the last musical production performed at Tallinn. THS is supposed to be performing the Family of the Opera next year, which is something we're very excited about. However, the lack of funding is something that we're uncertain of the possibility for next year. So all the clubs are not mere extras for our students to socialize, but rather educational extensions of our programs, since there's not enough time in the school day to offer all this. I fear for our students that are not athletes, if they will have a space next year, that they can see themselves as part of the school community. I apologize if I diverted us from our cheerful celebration tonight, but I would be remiss if I did not advocate on behalf of all of our students. We have an incredible, we have incredible teachers who will continue to provide our students with every opportunity that we can within our abilities next year. Again, I just want to say a huge thank you for taking the time to recognize our students' accomplishments, it really means the world to them and to us. Thank you for your support as always.
Let me take a moment, you know, just personally, as, as a parent of a third grader, to thank each and every one of these students. You know, be it your, your concerts on the green, your performances, your, your performance of Haiti Town on your jazz band. I've taken her to a myriad of these events, and she is just, it's wrong. She has already told me everything she wants to do, beginning in fourth grade, all the way through college, and all the various instruments she wants to play and sing. And it's because of you. As Representative Ackert said, you know, the arts are alive in Tallinn, and not only are you, you know, giving to the town and giving of yourselves, but you're ensuring that that next generation, those kids behind you, also have that passion, so from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, well, first, I also want to, personally, we didn't miss anyone, right? We got everybody, just want to make sure, the big rooms, it's hard to tell, so I think we did. I want to thank the parents, because I know that you're the ones that are, you know, buying the little spit things that they have to put in, some little things, you know, you got to go to the store. I know, because my daughter does this, so just a round of applause for the parents who are also.
What I wanted to do without creating any chaos at all, if I can, is parents, you get one too.
Yeah.
First of all, a beautiful night. Really. Then again.
And so we have uh, we have these.
I.
There are sins. You're in trouble.
No, no problem. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, can coffee? Well, especially. Perfect. That's. Well, yeah.
We have any more voicings to. I'm satisfied. I can do this. So that's just right. We got. All right. So um, thank you very, very much. And you know, our purpose tonight was to honor you and to recognize you, not to torture you. So you don't have to stay as we go into other things. We always welcome anyone who would like, but you don't have to. Um, and before we kind of break, uh, do any parents or any students want to say anything at all? Um, before we had a chance to awards, anyone like to say something?
Yeah, I would actually. Thank you. Um. My name's Lauren, I guess. Um, I just want, I live at one fifty-four Baxter Street. Um, this was a hard budget cycle. Um, and I just want to acknowledge the fight to give as much money as you could to say in our budget. Um, I know from all of the reading um, online and the various um, opinions that are there. And one of those opinions that we heard frequently is that nothing really will happen. There will be no impact on our students. And which I kept seeing that come up and thinking, I'm sure where or what people are reading. But um, the fact that you kept fighting, I want to commend you for two things. The ability to come together with the town council um, at a public meeting in a public setting so students could speak up. I hope to see more and more of that um, within our town. I thought that that was commendable. It put everyone in a position to share information equally and be able to be informed. So from um, my family who does sports and does music and drama. We do take advantage of the wide breadth of things that are offered in Talon and you being in a position to constantly try to fight for that. And I know having your face against those numbers when you take a half percentage point down and have to go out for another referendum is kind of hard. Um, but I was silently cheering, sometimes coming and talking, but sometimes silently cheering. So thank you, and I hope that you'll continue to do everything you can to support our kids. Um, you see what's happening here and I can't say enough about my experience with the teachers all the way through. So I'm so happy tonight was a celebration of not only the students' accomplishments, but the staff accomplishments. So thank you.
A second.
So. What she said.
Katie Star, Katie Lisa Lane. Um, I I hundred percent agree. Um, you know, there's been some rather not fun talks in my house. Um, as we come up on uh, the end of the school year, right? Like normally the kids are all pumped to for summer vacation, but the Phantom was announced as the play for next year and my kid, my kids are very excited, not just my high school kid, but my middle school kids too. Um, and yet the we have to talk about, well, what if that doesn't happen? And um, my schedule this week has um, my work schedule has luckily allowed me to attend meetings, but I was at town council last night. I'm here at Florida tonight. Tomorrow night's uh, Friends of Talon Music. Um, my kids signed me up for that meeting, so I didn't have a choice. It's cool. Uh, but that's that's where that's that's where uh, as a parent, I'm spending my time right now is to how can I support my kids? Um, you know, I am vocal in budget issues. Um, I played a role in that uh, where I could in the past. Um, but you know, there there's a lot of it, there's impacts to the kids right now and the middle school and high school kids are talking about it. Um, and that's the reality of what's going on in the schools today. Um, and I think it's important for you as the board of it to know that. I think the administration and the teachers are handling it great. Um, but it's a little, you know, we had a conversation about who's gonna do a half day next year at the correct school that does performing arts. Because that's an option for my kids, um, which costs our town more money uh, than it would if they just stayed in Talon all the all year. But but yet there's a program that could be an option. Um, and then that's a that's a real conversation we're having. So just so you guys are aware, we appreciate, I appreciate all of your support. Um, I know that this is hard. I really do. Um, but this is an awesome celebration where you have five teachers that are here. Um, that's, you know, these teachers spend all day in school and they're spent all day in school tomorrow too that are here. Um, and these teachers, I've seen these teachers at a ton of different events, whether it's Newsies or the really cool concert series that happened, um, which was really awesome to see all these kids come together um, to Haiti's Town this year. And these teachers are putting in a lot more time than I would expect, right? My dad was a teacher, he couldn't do all this. Um, so we have a unique value here in Talon. And whatever you can do to continue to support the students with that, I think is really important. So thank you for all you've done and a strong urging to continue that those efforts. Thank you.
Keep it short, Ben. Um, Kate Vala, um, eight Tom Green, I just wanted to say congratulations to all the students that are here tonight, all the students that couldn't make it and are part of this um, general music closeness. Um, I want to say thank you for to the teachers. Um, congratulations to everybody and um, I know y'all know this, but the arts really inform academics. Um, they keep your schools excellent. Whatever we can continue to do collectively as a community to support the arts and all of its forms would be just amazing. So excited for Friends of Talon Music is kicking off again tomorrow. Um, join us, you know, be part of that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right? Well, thank you guys. So we are going to recognize B G P as artists. So if you would like to wait for that. And so um, the next uh, recognition for tonight are our amazing B G P artists. Uh, and as you know, the um, the artists now are put on display. Their work is put on display at the um, at the Talon Public Library. And so they uh, they get honored there and there's a night. Um, and they go and their parents come and are able to take a look at their their stuff on display, just like at the art museum of art. It's but it's our library. And so um, here is the artwork that um, the kids did. Uh, and there there's some off to the there too, and you can see it there when you go. And thank you to Alexander Plarnell, Avery Penn, Taylor Soucy, uh, Olivia Moore, worst Mawerski, um, Amelia Duchet, Finley Brosbeck, uh, Annie Strolli, Matt Marowski, uh, Cindy Hoots. And um, let's see, Avery Corst, uh, Sero, Sorley Vasquez, Theodore Zarcone and Henry, Henrik Costa, Henrik Costa. So congratulations to all our artists and that's beautiful artwork. Does that just hit for our acknowledgements?
Again, as Dr. Will it said, uh, you're more than welcome to stay that will make me happy. However, uh, you're also welcome to go. Thank you all for everything you do and uh, as a note, students will continue talking. Budget season isn't just January, it's a big budget season all year long. As we try to figure out not only how to do this, but then how to govern with this. So continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I'm teaming up.
Again, there's time. There's tiny that like you got.
You gotta print it out. Phonetic.
One of the trophies fall.
They're a minute. That's offensive, man.
Oh, are they not being given out though or?
Well, no, they already were. They're for the groups. The basic.
Do it easy. Oh, oh, oh. That's okay. No, uh, I think. I believe that.
Sorry.
It was misunderstood. It could there be giving out.
Yeah. Congratulations.
That's all. We're good. Sorry.
Thank you.
Hi.
You're really good. I can. Well, they surplus help those things.
What I did.
We have to buy them in a certain ball. You know, maybe an ironic.
Thank you. Very nice. Very nice stuff.
Is he right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I always spoil the reason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's awesome. Um, it's Pullum. Thank you also to Ms. Pullum for helping with everything here. She did an amazing job helping get all of this stuff together. So thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Pullum.
All right. Moving on. The additions to be handled. So. Conversation there. Uh, so tonight's executive session, the intent of tonight's executive session was a Q and A and feedback on the superintendent's evaluation. Given the fact that we are missing almost half uh, of our board and that opportunity for the Q and A and evaluation. Uh, it is my recommendation that we move that to the next meeting. And however, and thank you both for pulling it up. After doing uh, a policy search, uh, it seems that the best and the most efficient opportunity to do here is to bring that here to to a vote. That's what I'm gonna do it here tonight or move it to the next meeting. But uh, that being said, I will entertain a motion either way.
Can we discuss before we motion? So the question I have for you is around schedule. If we don't do this tonight and we've pushed to our next meeting, which is June twenty-fifth?
Yes. And the next one's not until two.
And and then we can't. And we're pushing now until August, right? To to complete the evaluation. Am I, am I right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, we push our city. Yes, you are right. If we move it to the twenty fifth, uh, then after that meeting is when we start doing the writing of the uh, the document. We've got a review of the document and then we've got the the approval and the um, but yeah, but those meetings, because of the no meetings in July. That happens then on same.
So if we have the session tonight and we ask our questions, then you begin the writing of the evaluation now instead of at the end of the slot.
That's the virtue. Have you seen that? Did that bill get?
Well, yeah, so I'm I'm just wanting to understand what are the pros and cons of of doing or not doing this tonight?
Perfect. Okay. Back to Willie, you want to talk again?
Um, so I I did update the timeline when I saw Mr. Holt's communication and um, because the nature of it is for the the chair, vice chair, pro chair to to collect the question, you know, meaning answer questions and then presumably for them to collect information. Um, we probably have to do this again anyway. Because you're missing four out of your nine members, right? I guess so. You're gonna, they're they're not going to be contributing. And this is your opportunity, you know, partially to contribute and they're not going to be doing that. So at that, where would that happen if you'd end up having to have another meeting for that to happen? Because they're unable to do it tonight. It's the.
So you're saying regardless, you're gonna have another executive session no matter what we do tonight?
I don't know how you'd collect, you don't, you know, like you're missing four out of the nine. So how would you collect all questions and collect all the?
I feel the questions are being collected.
Let's finish.
Yeah, I guess.
We're to talk about it.
Hold on if we could, please.
Yeah, I I mean, I guess in my mind, uh, you know, the yeah, the the questions were supposed to be collected in the one on ones. And with whoever scheduled them with you.
With with your your timeline has you guys having the opportunity to ask any follow up questions about the document I presented to you last time. So you'd have follow up questions, you may have discussion, you may have, but you're going to be doing it in the isolation of four out of your nine members. So the questions would, you know, this is partly four question and.
Wait, let me come over here. Let break. You you.
Well, that's what I was kind, I so again, this this whole timeline gets really, I thought we were supposed to schedule, if we wanted to talk to Dr. Will it and we had questions that we wanted to get answered, we're scheduling a meeting and it was supposed to kind of end today. I thought Ju- June eleventh was the last day or, you know, but or maybe the last day to schedule, I'm not really sure. But June eleventh was the date. That was where the information that, you know, we wanted to contribute and that's why we were gonna have someone who was writing be there and so forth. So I am a little confused about why we would have, you know, this meeting tonight with questions and then we'd have to have it again, even if we have it tonight. Because I believe the communication said, well, this will extend the time that people can meet with. You know, I so I I don't understand the this.
So if I can, you know, on that part, absolutely. The the communication you're referring to is thinking of it as a now today. And and yes, uh, my thought on that was if we move tonight's executive session to the next there to the next meeting. And then that provides the opportunity for any other one on ones between now and then. It it just extends that time available.
So then why do we have to have another meeting altogether?
This is the purpose of tonight's. Regardless of the the one on one, the purpose of tonight's was for any group questions and and feedback. And with half, almost half of the board gone today, uh, I just felt that that wouldn't give that opportunity. And given the fact that we kick into August anyway, and really the schedule is the superintendent's uh, per contract, uh, I didn't see that there was a negative to pushing it. Did that answer your question, right?
I don't know.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, like just as a clarified point of what Rooney is saying, because I have a timeline here. It was just supposed to be up to the ten. Says individual board uh, member meetings if they desire with their chair or vice chair present with the superintendent up to the tenth, and then that got Xed out as sometime late this afternoon to the twenty fourth. So they all should have happened already, whether people were here this evening or or not. According to the schedule.
And and then that, I mean, they have, we've had some, excuse me, we've had some scheduling constraints. Uh, where we've had to to do some after today, which ultimately the communication is important. If if Dr. Will it, from the superintendent's perspective, is willing to have his evaluation extend further uh, into August, the opportunity to have those conversations and those negative survey is.
I mean, technically it gives you more time to do that if you weren't there. The 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 whole thing getting pushed back because of this just gives you more time if you want. That's really what it does. I I okay, I do the only that is the the problem that I have is I I feel like we're 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 trying to cater to the four that aren't here this evening and I don't know and why they're not here. That's not my first, that's their own personal reason. But the five that are here I feel are being sideswiped, so to speak, to the other four that are not here. And we want to cater to people that aren't even in the room. Uh, the I'll just leave it at that. That's just my personal view.
So if if we go through with this executive session tonight and have have discussion with Dr. Will it, is it your plan to do another one when everyone is here?
Yes.
If anyone is here, because there may, you know, what if?
All right. Uh, it is my attempt to bring it up to the agenda planning. Yes. Right, I'm sorry.
I I shouldn't have been trumped for you. I'm sorry. I just, you know, I feel like, well, what if? Well, let's say we we don't have the executive session today and then when you have the next one, what if some of us can't be there? You know, I mean, to constantly be, I I would feel maybe potentially slighted or I don't know if others would. Well, you know, now we're gonna have it on August, whatever it's gonna be, or, you know, the next meeting. Oh, well, geez, now I can't come. Yeah, I don't know. There I I guess there's a part of me that somewhat agrees with what Brian is saying. It's sort of like the the people that are, when I'm not at a meeting, I have to take the consequences of what goes on at the meeting. And, you know, maybe people wrote on things that I might have not wanted or want, did want and didn't go through. It is what it is. So I mean, I I understand what you're saying. There is a a group that's not here and that's an unusual situation, but you know, I don't, I don't know.
And and I recognize and certainly appreciate what you're saying. Uh, where I think the distinction. And, and I recognize and certainly appreciate what you're saying, different, uh, where I think the distinction lies here tonight. It is that normally we have a person, two people. Uh, tonight we're missing four. Uh, and I think if next meeting, almost half of the board wasn't there, but, you know, the regardless of who votes for, the conversation is still valid. It, it's the number.
There's a lot more to say. So with three or four missing next meeting, are you pushing it again?
If four are missing next meeting. Given everything else is the same, I would, it would be very addiction pushing.
I potentially won't be here at next meeting. I, I'm not saying that out of disconsolation, but no, I'm, I'm, the, the Monday of, of traveling the Monday before and depending on what happens, whether I'll be able to attend twenty fifth or not, I'm not sure. I've said that for a couple of months.
You bet.
Yeah, I think we have two executive sessions. If you're planning to do it anyway. I, I think it's only right for the people that are here to have our executive session in case something happens where they're not available next meeting. Stuff can always happen.
Entertain a motion either way.
Yeah, entertain a motion. Uh, we don't need the motion to have it. It's already out. Looking for a motion to take it off the agenda.
That work? Okay. Hearing none. We'll keep it on the engine. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the May twenty eighth minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion?
All right. Ready?
Aye.
Right. All right, Bill.
All right.
Aye. Passes. All right, public participation. Members of the Talon Board of Ed. In case you welcome members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, excuse me, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting set. If you would like to speak for those in the room, please raise your hand. For those online, please raise your zoom in. As always, please start with your name and address for the minutes. Doing twice. Closing public participation. Correspondence, as you said.
We have, uh, two emails coming, coming that, uh, Dr. Willa was able to address in a timely way. Concerning minutes and the other was actually, uh, concerning setting up scholarship information. So that was. Wonderful.
All right. Points of information, anybody from the board like to speak? Ready, please.
Right, I wrote it down so I wouldn't go on. Too, too long. So with a budget vote, vote behind us, I believe the board should immediately begin to focus on sustainability actions that we can develop and deploy as soon as possible to help support the school district in new ways. We've all seen the impacts budgets have had on programs and positions over the last several years. If we don't begin to find new ways to support the schools, other than simply asking the taxpayers to pay more. I believe history will continue to repeat itself and we will continue to see low increases that result in loss of programs. We should not sit and wait till the next budget cycle to address this issue. Board members have introduced ideas for savings and or revenue generation. Some of these take time to implement, so we need to begin the work now. Some rever- revenue producing ideas that have been brought forward, open choice for expanded grades. Preschool for a fee. Buy your own device, partial payment towards the device, or potentially change one-to-one tech to maybe not start till grade five or some other grade level. Sell signage rights at ball fields and gymnasiums. Unite with other board, local boards of ed and our state representatives to lobby for replacement of lost ECS funding. Cost avoidance or sustainability programs, clubs that are supported by fees. Slash an amount needed to pay a stipend. Review of the bus routes, potentially joining the middle school and the high school buses to see if that results in savings. Review of classes with low participation, should they be changed or removed? Donations, volunteerism expansion. Policy and enforcement of collection of money owed to the schools, lunch, clubs, sports, et cetera. And address the correct split for the health insurance cost between town and the board of ed. The superintendent likely has some ideas as well. I'm not asking for any immediate response to any of these ideas. I'm asking the chair, the vice chair and the superintendent to put this on the next agenda so the board can prioritize each viable idea and then create space on future agendas where we can flesh out obstacles and solutions. To at least put some of these ideas or others in motion. If we are truly here for the students and staff, we owe it to them to do what we can to explore all avenues to support the district and mitigate losses of staff and programs. And I'll send that to you via email.
Well, great, Rainy. Thank you, Betty. Yes, sir. Uh, yes, I, I'd just like to, um, echo this great information Rainy have put together. Uh, but we do see this stuff on future agendas. Uh, for discussion and brainstorming and solutions and uh, moving the ball forward for that. And your aim in regards to not, um, the taxpayers, not unwilling, but, uh, unable it seems. And doesn't have an appetite for large tax increases, as we've seen over the past decade plus. But I think we need to take action in other ways and hopefully some of these agenda items. It makes some things happen in the district that we haven't been doing, that we can make some changes to move forward some ideas. That's on that. I have one other. One other point of information that I like to state here. I know, so it comes down to the topic of the option of the ability that we've been back and forth twice this year. Um, being able to explain your vote after voting, making a statement. So I found here in a policy, oh, it's ninety-one seventy. Quorum of voting procedures. The last item, two F, says any board member shall have the opportunity to explain his or her, her vote for recording in the minutes. So I do wanna state that what times has been back and forth, no, you can't say anything. Yes, you can say anything. So for point of clarification, we have it in the policy. And just wanna make sure that this gets in this minutes. That moving forward, we're able to s- make a statement regarding our vote. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say I agree with, with Rainy's statement. Um, you know, the word, as you were reading it, that, that came to, to mind was uh, being proactive instead of reactive. You know, um, we, we got through budget season last year and we stopped talking about it. And I don't want that to happen this year. And what makes it more difficult um, is that we've got elections in November. So it's gonna be a new board. Coming, uh, first time into budget season. And, um, at least for Brian and I, you know, we can recognize that it was like a whirlwind. Our head was spinning that first one. We were a little bit more, uh, understanding of it the second time, but I, I think if we as the current board kinda set the standard that we're, we always need to be talking about budget. We always need to be, you know, exploring ways to keep programs instead of continually reduce programs and, and staff. Um, you know, I, I, I think that just sets the standard for the next board coming in that this is what we do. It's always budget season. Um, year round, it's budget season because, you know, the, the schools don't have an off time. It's, it's always on. We always have to, um, be mindful of the finances and, and make sure we've got, uh, make sure that we're sustainable. So I agree with what you said, Rainy. I think a lot of those things on there were, were great ideas. And should be explored and vetted out to, to see where, you know, we can, you know, begin, um, saving, um, and increasing instead of continually reducing.
Thank you. Interesting picture. All right.
All right. Last one ever for me. Or maybe for everyone. You know. All right. So we just recently had our class night. It was at the Neely's in South Windsor. We had a very lovely dinner, a very lovely thunderstorm. And a really nice slideshow. We also got our yearbooks and had the opportunity to sign our yearbooks. Um, and it was a really great night for the seniors. Speaking of the seniors and speaking of thunderstorms, our senior sunset has been moved. It was originally on Sunday, or it would be this Sunday. It has now been moved to tomorrow. Um, so bring your blankets, bring your games, bring your food. It's at seven thirty on the turf. It's gonna be a lot of fun. I will not be there. I will be at a piano recital. Yay me. Um, caps and gowns for seniors are available for pickup in the mini gym that started yesterday. It also happened today. I believe it'll also happen tomorrow at the end of the day or at the end of third block for those who have our latest missile. I got my cap and gown. If you want to decorate your cap and gown, too late because the, uh, portal to submit your designs has closed. So if you're just thinking of that now. Yikes. Uh, senior finals are Thursday and Friday. Obviously, I'm exempt. But, uh, for those who are not. Yikes. Um, finals for blocks three and four will be tomorrow and finals for blocks one and two will be on Friday. Why it's flip-flop like that? Ask Dr. Willet. Um, and then for regular finals, those will be on Wednesday and Thursday of next week. So that will be for freshmen, sophomores and juniors. And, um, that may also follow with, no, that will follow. Blocks one and two will be on Wednesday, blocks three and four will be on Thursday. And then graduation for seniors is next Monday. And seniors, there's a big breakfast for them at eight AM. I will be sleeping, but at nine AM, all the seniors have to come in for rehearsal. It is mandatory. If you have extenuating circumstances, talk to Ms. Poland or Ms. Maranin. But if you do not attend this, you are not allowed to walk. So it's very important to be there. And then school's out, uh, June nineteenth for the high school and June eighteenth for the district. So.
And we have a gift for Audrey. At home, if you would like.
We do have a gift. Um, I was warned that spoiler is not a pony, but I hope it's about five water bottles. Do you want me to?
Everything, we don't, I think I have to carry out.
All right. I love wrapping paper. It's a water bottle.
That's funny dollar.
There's more.
Guys, my prize, stop.
Don't do that to the owl.
Michigan State. I will be attending Michigan State in the fall. Your old solving that?
Well, I didn't go to Michigan State. I went to college near Michigan. Spring Auburn.
Started there for those cold.
Spent a lot of time on Michigan State though.
Yeah, fantastic. Oh, and a straw. Amazing. Um, yeah, so I will be attending Michigan State in the fall. I will be studying political science on a pre-law track. And I wrote my college board essay, which is the essay I have to write for all the colleges on the board of ed. And being on board of ed.
Nice.
Uh, I've been here for three years. And I've loved it as much as I disdain it. And I think that it has truly changed my perspective on everything. Being part of this club has, club? Nope. I've been to a lot of clubs, you didn't, uh, being part of this board has been so just it's, I'm speechless. Like there's nothing to say that I haven't already said. I talk so much here.
You'd be the only one, Audrey, this week.
But this has been very important to me. And it's weird to feel like it's my last one. Like, I don't know. Weird.
Always thank.
You always come back.
Done an amazing job, right? Yeah. No, but you can get us on Zoom.
You're feeling.
This isn't your last one. You have made an impression on the board. Now, in, in your three years, I sincerely appreciate your willingness, not only to report on what the students need, what they have, but also to give your thoughts and your opinions. I know we have turned to you sometimes randomly without, uh, warning and said, what do you think? And you have been absolutely willing to give a very candid and very honest assessment, which is sincerely appreciated. So as you move on to Michigan State and go on with what I'm absolutely certain is gonna be an amazing and exciting life, rest assured that what you've contributed here has changed not only this board, but this district for the better. Thank you.
You brought energy into this room. So thank you for that. You did a really fantastic job. Fantastic, amazing, you know, and we were very lucky to have very, it's, it's quite a period of time here, isn't it? This is a lot, you should know. It's hard to be awesome and to be a senior and to be graduating.
You set the bar high for the next person that sits there.
Thank you very much.
You know, in the two years that I've been here with you, you know, I, I think about when I was a senior or a sophomore, when you started doing this, that I certainly couldn't speak the way that, that you have spoken with us and, and like, um, Tony said, you know, just off the cuff, when you're asked questions of your opinion, just be able to, to give honest cohesive feedback to us. Um, that is impactful to us when we ask you for those things. So, you know, definitely will be missed and you've made an impression.
Even though it's not called the Stafford Coffee Company anymore, apparently, next time I see that our, our coffee for, for.
I'm excited.
Ten years down the line, you could have a tune.
Yeah, I'm, and I have right now.
Let me take them out.
No, but as my final word, and to keep the tune, I will be leaving early because I wanna go get a refresher. I'm very tired. But, um, you know, the world is changing every day. School is extremely important. Education is extremely important. Please always keep in mind that our school is the most valuable thing that the children in talent have. And college is different now. College, applying for college is different now. And students will not get into college without good extracurriculars. They will not. You could be valedictorian, become four point O GPA, you're not getting into a good school if that's all you have. Because things are different. And I worry for our schools because of the budget cuts that we've had, because of how difficult the admissions process has been done. So please keep that in mind when you're finding out ways to save things, when you're finding out to have. Keep in mind that things are not like they were when you were in high school, when you were applying to college. They're different. They're harder. They're a lot weirder. So make sure that you keep the modern era in mind while you're working on this. And I thank you all for the time you've put in here. Thank you all for your Wednesday nights. And even though I have agreed, disagreed with everyone here and everyone who's not here. I really, really appreciated what you've done for your community and the service that you've brought us on. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and Sarah couldn't be here tonight, but we have a, a gift for Sarah.
I can bring it to her tomorrow. We have lots to get it.
Don't repeat your cave girls.
Oh, I have my own. You can keep this.
Sarah, thank you. Sarah's done amazing. We're lucky to have Sarah.
Yeah. Go green. Boo Michigan.
We're gonna be good games.
Oh, great games. Season tickets. Come visit. All right. Goodbye, everybody. You know, love you.
All right. Media liaison reports, curriculum. Never mind that. This month. Nothing at this time. FFC?
FFC?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, all right. And, no, uh, no. Just, right, moving on then, uh, I do not have a chairperson's report. Dr. Willet, monthly financials.
Half yawn and mid yawn. Um, so as you know, the first meeting of every month is the monthly financial report. Um, we are getting close to the end of the year. This is May. We will have reports for June as well and then July. And then in August or September, we give you the final numbers for the year. Um, there are gonna be things as we get into the end of the year that are still kind of encumbered and then expended. Um, we've been up through and then June thirtieth, but then some things residually hang on as, as things are processed through, so. Um, so this is for May, and many of these things uh have been pretty much the same thing every month that I highlight, um, because it's the same areas. Uh, but substitutes are over budget by a hundred seventy-four thousand. Um, we talked about that. Um, having to do with a lot of vacancies and things that um, you know, had to be filled and so on, and we still have to serve um the students, even if, say, you know, the pair is not in place, then we have to serve it with subs or serve the student with subs or um others, consultants, uh, things like that. Um, you know, they're a consulting firm or a firm that came in to supply people. So, you know, an example would be, we'll see where there's five or six lines that are over because we had to cover for um, you know, for the salary line where we couldn't hire those people. Uh, overtime, the overtime budget is um also um, it's over for twenty-six thousand. Uh, again, this is custodial subs, and we talked about that before. I'll be moving that line a little bit around next year, so it is a little bit different number. But it goes from one thirty to one thirty-nine currently for overtime. And so next year, it'll be one thirty-six and one thirty-seven and one thirty-nine, um, just to consolidate. Um, stipends, uh, we talked about those before. Um, we have some special education ones um with lead program. And um, and then you also have the transportation situation at BGP that we discussed in the past. These are very similarly, you know, the things that we've been talking about along the way. Um, we're still collecting, you know, funds, you believe it or not. We still continue to, you know, pass people to, um, if it haven't already, you know, pay up on certain things, um, pay to play and so on. Life help, disability insurance, um, that's over by two eighty-eight. Last month it was two eighty-seven, so there's not much of a change. Um, and this will continue to change as things shift around a little bit. Uh, professional education services, three twenty, over by three hundred forty-seven thousand four nineteen. Last month it was three twenty-nine. It'll continue to change due to special education and contracted services and psych vacancy and all of those things. Um, so again, this would be an example of a line that is also going to, you know, offset that. Um, you know, that they, the salary line there, you know, so sometimes people will say, oh, well, look, that salary line is negative only a hundred and, you know, and then why is it that, you know, this other line is tied? The, that, to compensate for the people that um weren't able to hire in salary, um, all these other lines have gone over and there's like five, six lines like this, and professionalized services would be one of them. Um, so an example would be, you know, you're not gonna just see it in the salary line. You'll see it across all of these lines. The psychologist, for instance, was a contracted service for BGP when we didn't have a person and it was more expensive than the person because you couldn't fill the position because there was twenty-six openings for that. I had like twenty-six people looking for psychs in the state. Um, we were all buying for psychs and there weren't any psychs graduated. So anyway, we were very lucky and we were able to place a psych in BGP. And so now at this point, moving forward, that should be resolved, but that's the, that's why. Uh, tech services, three fifty is over by um, about forty thousand. Um, again, that has to do with uh, you know, these additional costs that sometimes these companies at a certain point, they raise their costs and you end up having some, they've raised costs for the subscriptions. Um, everything now, everything is, is subscription. Um, so, well, almost everything. So you don't buy software or things like Power School anymore like that. It's every year it renews and it's a subscription you pay to them for their service now. Um, and that's, that's the way the business model's been moving. Um, you buy into the subscription like a, it's that music thing now, I have no idea. And that's our prodigy, Spotify. Yeah, everything. It used to be, buy this, buy the records, now you subscribe to Spotify. And that's how it works for all of us too. Uh, and then when they change their costs, you're stuck. So that's part of it. Repair and maintenance fees, um, four thirty is over, uh, twenty-three thousand this month due to HVAC problems that we had to fix. Um, there were some boiler issues February and March and it hit, it hit now. So that, that impacted things. Um, general supplies um is over. Uh, the cost of the custodial supplies went up this year and so there was some there. Um, and then other things here are pre-investments, as we talked about in our list of things. One of the things we were doing is where we could buy some supplies. So this was buying some supplies as part of our budget, budget strategy. Those are basically the highlights. Um, we have, you know, uh, June as one more month of experience and then um probably by September, we'll give you the finals. You know, August or September, Promise Tower, we'll give you the final five, oops, where everything landed.
Okay.
Thank you. I know, I believe you mentioned this, but I just want to clarify my own sanity. The, the salaries line, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars under budget is for positions that are unfilled, correct?
Yeah, there's.
And I know it's eaten up in these other sections. I, I get that, but I just, how many, how many positions are unfilled approximately?
Uh, right now, I think, well, it's changing, but like, we only really have
Under the previous budget.
One teacher, one or two in the teacher realm, but one of them was the para, for instance, it's under a teacher contract.
How was that seven hundred?
Most of those, most of those are the um, the um, this, you know, school site, for instance, is a big one, but the, it's the um paras, the paras and yeah, I screw up and all of that. These are the
And all those open pair positions and the one site position.
You offset those with the contracted services.
Yeah, I, I know, I know, I know what eats up that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm just wondering what totals that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we currently don't have that is an empty position.
The paras.
Hmm, okay.
Teachers are in there too, but I think we have now um two or three for this month. But at last month, I think it was, it was that psych.
Gotcha.
Um, but throughout the year, it's been, you know, fluctuates.
Okay, and then uh one other one that just caught my eye as we were scrolling through this telephone. It's fifty-six hundred dollars uh over budget, but what, what, I mean, do we not? Is there not set prices for our phone service?
Well.
Or are these cell phones or what, what constitutes?
Probably telephone is the Abaya system. And it's probably, I'll have to research exactly why it's over, but um, it's, that's probably our, you know, our network, our system. There's stuff we had to pay for that we didn't, well, blew up or something like that.
Okay, so hardware, it's probably hardware related, not service related.
Call Abaya, yeah.
Gotcha.
So, and they are, they went out of business. So getting repairs and replacements and all of that is, but I'll check it out.
Yeah.
We have to get a new phone system then if they went out of business?
We don't. Somebody's absorbing them, probably. And, you know. I believe it's that they went out of business, makes it a little harder, but then there's, their companies absorb them and then take them under their wing.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Is it, I'm trying to remember the name because there's five names of different products we have. I think it's a five.
Oh, I got one other question. We haven't heard much about our new credit card. How's that, how's that going?
Good. The FFC does uh, it's kind of, it is doing quarterly, I think, reports on that. But I think another one is gonna come up in the next FFC. I think FFC, though, I think is in August.
Right, so.
But it's working very
Working well?
And then there's minutes of the FFC meeting, uh, one or two meetings ago that talked about it.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, just to answer that, that we've gone off and like there's a limit time, it's very good, so, so just. Yeah, and things are good.
You're, you're, you're kind of muddled there, Dan. Say that again.
Away from the mic.
Sorry, I'm in my car. Things are going well in that, though.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, question? Dr. Willet, policy fifty-four oh two, meal charging policies. First read, I didn't say.
Yes, so fifty, fifty-one oh two meal charging. This is basically housekeeping. Um, you know, we changed the price of the lunches occasionally. You'll have, have some modifications in language because Shipwain updates certain housekeeping pieces of their policy uh models. So there's a paragraph now that um, they're advising to make sure it gets in there. That's a direct statement of support for the USDA food program. So that it's very clear that we work within the, you know, the boundaries of the um USDA and S, you know, school breakfast program, all of that. And um that our stuff aligns with everything and that we work in accordance with federal law and that we make announcements um and post um the um criteria for random lunches and all that. Then we do that. But they, that paragraph that's in blue is something that they want to make sure that is in there more verbatim. And so that's, that's the big change is we put this paragraph in.
Sure, comments? All right, Dr. Willet, policy ninety-two, ninety-one two zero, conflict of interest.
Yes, now, this is an interesting one. Um, yeah, the old conflict of interest policy uh, basically said that um, if you look at the first two, no member of the board shall be employed by uh the board in any position. Makes sense. And then two is, if any member of the board is employed contrary to the provisions by law of the office to which he or she was elected, shall become vacant. Okay? And that's pretty standard. Years ago, added to the boards were these other two. Immediate spouses can't, which is kind of tough for a town like Tallinn because, I mean, you might be married to someone who is a teacher and get on the board. So that happens. And so that's a peculiar thing. And then um, board members are encouraged to resign if a member of their immediate family wishes to apply for a permanent position. This is tough because there's so many, it, it's one of the major employers in Tallinn. So at any time, any one of your spouses might want to be a para or want to be, especially, you know, we'd love to have a pair of us, but want to be in a position. So it's a little bit, it's not what's done and it's not what, when I looked at it, this is not the Shipwain's language. And we ended up carrying language from before my time that has these things in it, but it's not Shipwain's recommendation. And I can see why that would be a problem because you're, this is one of the major employers. Board members are typically moms and dads who have kids and families. Does that mean your child can't work for the school in the summer? Is there summer programs and summer thing? You know what I mean? So it just looked like it needed a little adjustment because it doesn't, it's not something that happens everywhere.
Love it.
So it's replacing it with just, it's just making it the first two.
One and two.
It's killing the ones that say that you can't, your spouse, your kids and all that can't be a part. You can't work for the board and be, you know, work for the schools and be on the board, but your kids and spouse and all that. I think we shouldn't do it.
Any comments?
Let her get in here.
Yeah. Should we have anything in there about with our current situation with clubs and activities? Should we have something in there that talks about volunteering? Where a stipend would normally be paid, but not taking that stipend and still being on board? For example, if I want to volunteer to lead a club that's normally stipend and say, I don't want the stipend, I'll just leave the club.
Your biggest obstacle would be Article thirty-eight of the current. But you, you
That is not, okay.
You could technically
Fine, that's an obstacle.
There's like a hundred and sixty-seven volunteers. We have a whole volunteer corps and we do a whole background check and we have a big volunteer group. But they, and technically, I mean, anyone of you could volunteer.
Well, let me
You could sign up to be a volunteer.
Let me give you, for example, I know the, the middle school boys' basketball team did not get a coach until like two days before the first game. Because they couldn't find, find someone. So that's a situation where someone um on this board could have said, all right, I don't want the kids to do without, I'll step up and do it. I just don't want to take the stipend because there is obviously no teacher willing to do that. Eventually, a teacher took it. Um, but in a situation like that, under this, if I was to step up and say, hey, I'll do it for my kid and these other kids, but I can't take the stipend, even though it's a stipend position.
Yeah, I mean,
Where would that?
It's tricky. I have to ask the attorney because there's a couple of layers to your question. So, first of all, I think board members can volunteer. You could sign up to be a volunteer for, you can go through the background check and then whatever, get in there. And that means that when we go to the state house, you go along, you know, you could volunteer, go along with it, could take it to, you know, to the lunch or the, or the bathroom or whatever, if you have been vetted and you're on the list and you've been background checked. Um, so you can do that now.
Right.
I think when it comes to something like coaching, A, pass the offer to the first, and then if they decline, you could go out to the community. Any community member could technically give that money back. They could say, oh, you know, you're giving me a stipend, I want to just donate that right back to the school, you know, give it back.
But would that person be on payroll if they were gonna give it back?
So, well, so they, they could just try to deny it, say, I want it, or they could just give it back. Now, they, everybody gets a check from the district, is processed through our payroll. The issue comes when it's, if a board member is in a role like coach for a team, that we might have to take a personnel action on the person at some point. That's where it gets money. Because you're, whether you're even a volunteer or a coach, you know, that's paying. If, and I'm not saying whatever happened, but you know, in some part of, you know, I'm sure time, somebody had this problem. Um, if the coach of, say, the football team happens to be a board member and you have to take action against that person, Title IX action, any other kind of action, it gets money. And the board, there might be bias on the board and influence against the board or one way or the other, or you know, that, that's where it gets money.
Oh, that makes sense.
That's why that's kind of like that. It draws the line at the board members. Then the Shipwain's thing is only about board members. For those reasons.
No, that makes total sense. That, I'm good.
They have a comment. Dr. Willet, obsolete and surplus equipment.
It's that time again.
It's an exciting time.
Very exciting. Um, and what's kind of cool about this list is um blackberries and clip phones. And uh
They're making a comeback.
They all, they are, especially in certain populations. Um, so Caia Sierra, I remember that phone. That was nice phone. So um, these are all things that have to be, they're tech, they're old tech. And the old tech is turned over to the town and then the town can either sell it or dispose of it accordingly. And so this school district has no use for some of these things. What happens with Verizon is um, you know, the district will get a, a Verizon contract that has phones for certain people. And then when that contract is up, they just re-up another phone. And then these other phones get old and you try to use them for variety of things, but this is the example of those split phones are so old, there's almost nothing that could be done with them from the education point here at this point. So that's why um, as per policy, we are uh requesting that these get surplused over to the town and um, you know, accordance with thirty forty, and then the town can sell them for whatever they can get from places.
Is it, or does he go, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Is it not something that we, that any sort of uh technology experimental classes can want to bust these open and investigate the chips or wiring and different things? Because you're not gonna get any, this is all just gonna be thrown in the landfill.
Yeah, some of this stuff, I mean, they do, some of that is done, but um, some of these things, uh, you know, with lithium, certain battery types they have and things like that, they have to be really careful with it, but they do do that. I mean, our kids rip apart rombooks and reassemble them because
That's what I was asking.
They're, you know, they, they, they can do that. And we replace screens and keyboards and, you know, all that. These things are just so old that a lot of times, Dave, some of them have been obliterated. You know, some of them did have that happen. And then other ones are harder to break into. I think the iPhones are particularly difficult to open.
Did you start to say so? Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, do we really have forty phones that we provide to staff?
I don't know if it's forty, but we do have phones. Yeah, it's one of the things that you can, we can do as a staff, not all staff, it's mostly admin. Gotcha. Gotcha, you should have to be able to reach admin anywhere they are.
Makes sense. Alright, undertake a motion to move this to board action. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, moving it to board action. Alright, Rainy.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Alright, Bill.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Alright, Dr. Will, let me make this item N one. Moving on, Dr. Will, at board action items N one.
There you are, obsolete and surplus equipment, there is a beautiful motion party right there.
Could you bring up the motion?
I had it.
Motion to declare the sample IT equipment is obsolete and turn it over to the town in accordance with the Board of Education policy thirty forty.
Second. Discussion. Alright, hearing none, Rainy.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Alright, Bill.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Give it to him.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Yeah, I appreciate it.
They will love every day. Can't wait to see Mr. Foley with that.
Hands on the Kaya Sierra.
Alright, uh, public participation, comments limited items on this agenda. Please start with your name and address for the minutes, anybody in the room, raise your hand, if you're online, please raise your zoom hand and be recognized. Right. Closing. Uh, public participation. Points of information, anybody from the board would like to speak during points of information?
Yeah, I, I had one thing I had missed earlier, I do apologize, I want to, uh. Recognize, uh, hold on, look for the tab there. There it is, I want to recognize, uh, our wonderful. Uh, grade seven national champ for the invention convention. Arnia Dongary, so she ended up placing first place. At the comp, national competition. Yes, yes, she wanted to demonstrate, yes, yes. It's time to face superintendent Facebook.
You know, she went on Facebook, she's. Yeah, that, that set up the opportunity to congratulate her. Yeah, we will, we'll bring her back for the national.
Alright, awesome, thank you, yeah, yeah, that's great, yeah, that was good to see.
Uh, any other points of information? Alright, then I want to retain a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of superintendent's evaluation. Move to enter a motion for going into executive session with Dr. Will.
Second.
Discussion. Alright, Rainy.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Alright, Bill.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi. Hi.
We're entering Lisa, uh, you are more than welcome to tack up the go homeless, it's the last item on the agenda, Dr. Will can get you the time we come back in.
Okay, so the last item in future is, we have obviously a, a number of things coming up that you will probably want to participate in. Or if you get the time to participate in, um, I can load it up here, so. You, you know that you're invited to TMS promotion, um, and then THS graduation, because.
Is everybody planning, planning on coming or is anybody not planning on coming?
Uh, unfortunately, I cannot attend either this year, I do apologize, I have. Uh, commitments on both evenings, so.
Shame here, I'm so sorry.
Okay, I, I was going to the middle school one on Friday, but just had a. Baseball game that we scheduled and I got a coach that.
Could be there Monday?
I will be there Monday, but I do think Jayden, my assistant coach, I do think Jayden will miss the game, so I'd be willing to go to that. And I've talked briefly about that, that. He would miss, I would stay.
I've responded already to the letters that I got.
So you're very good for.
I'm, I'm not going to either or not, is it, well, unfortunately, but I already let them know.
Yeah, I let them know.
Just, yeah, just, just for my, my application. Which I will be at high school.
Um, the, the, you're all, always also welcome at the step up ceremonies, they're just a little less formal. So you get formal invitations to the promotion graduation, the step ups are cute and, you know, there, you could come to those too if you wanted to, just let me know. And we'll, we'll have you brought into those, um, so that's it, I mean, right now, future is basically stepping up and graduating. It's getting everybody to move to their next steps.
Did we get invitations to the TIS promotion or do?
That's what I'm saying, they're not, they're not formal, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah, if you want to, let me know within any of them, but the ones that where you're actually, they're what you would expect as a graduation are more like the TMS.
For those who have the time, the virtue of one is absolutely adorable.
It is cute. And we do do a, a, um, senior walk, which is happening on the thirteenth, where all of our seniors walk through all of our buildings. And all the teachers and all the kids. The teachers.
Yeah, that's good.
Feels cute.
So I'd say, uh, when I, my oldest did that last year, I wasn't aware that, that. And she didn't certainly go through all the schools, but, you know, she was able to see her siblings in the other schools. And, uh, you know, that was, that's one of the great, um, things that, that we do for our seniors. Is, is that they get to see their old teachers.
Yeah, and then it's.
I think that's good.
That's really special.
Oh, undertake a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Rainy.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Well, thank you all, have a great evening.